Always making the grand entrance.
Our attorney's here, we can begin. Thank y'all for coming to tonight's work session for the city of Easly. We have several, we have a lot of agenda items to discuss tonight. And we'll get started with the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty five fourteen to authorize the conveyance of any and all interest in certain real property in the city of Easly located at two oh one South Fifth Street and two oh five South Fifth Street, Easly, Pickens County, South Carolina. Second reading, any discussion?
So, discussion?
No.
There's been a lot of talk about, from people not wanting us to sell it. And I can't see any reason to hold on to it. Larry shouldn't have taken over and took it over in the first place. Back in the day.
No discussion? Everybody's...
Mayor Talbert, I was not here last month, but I did watch the video of the meeting and have the greatest respect for the appraiser. But to me, it's hard to separate the value of the dirt from the value of the building. I'm sure if the appraiser could come up with some mechanism for doing that. But in my experience, and I'm not giving legal advice to counsel, it would be most unusual to have the sale of a building like that, the building itself without the dirt to go along with it, most unusual.
Especially at that price.
Yes, ma'am. Certainly, you know, there are ground leases and commercial real estate projects. And I'm sure New York City is full of ground leases and ninety-nine year, ground leases and ninety-nine year leases for the building on top of the ground. But something around here, that would be most unusual. I think it'd be hard to separate the value of the building from the value of the land. And I understand that this has been a drain on the city's finances and resources. And might be a good opportunity to pass it on to the school district.
Well, they have great plans for it. If you watched, you've probably heard Dr. Mark talk about expanding their adult education program and they want to involve the school kids in the theater. So, they've got lots of plans for it, so.
As far as the, the price, is this the best price we could get?
I think that's as high as the school board is going to go.
And I think I asked Tom once before about parking. Would there be any assurance that the public could park if it didn't conflict with the school district?
I don't, as far as the school district's going to use it for their programs, and it's always been open as it has been. I don't see any reason why they're going to restrict anybody from parking when they're not using it. I don't think they're going to restrict anybody from parking when they are using it. It's just going to be open to parking.
And it needs some heavy duty heating and air conditioning work, right? A couple hundred thousand dollars?
Yes, sir. Not quite that much, but yes.
And the ceiling frequently leaks.
And we send somebody over there every day from rec?
To clean it.
To clean it?
Yes.
Yes.
So, if we, what is it, eight hundred thou or nine hundred?
The offer's nine.
Nine. We don't need to be in the real estate business.
Thank you. That's exactly what I wanted to say. It's the, the school undid initially and for whatever reason that transact, that transaction took place, the school, the building should go back to the school and let them expand and be a benefit to the community and get us out of the real estate business.
I don't, I, I wouldn't hear when it was taken over, but Mr. Whitmore called me this week, David Whitmore called and told me about his trip inside. I guess it was with the mayor at the time. And it was apparently abandoned. It wasn't being used and it was really rough. But the school district has some really good plans now for it. And I think it, it's important to the community and it's important to people in the city. So, I think that this is the best way to preserve it rather than have somebody to tear. It's expensive to tear buildings down, you know, when they get to a point that they're financially drained. And I would hate to see that happen to the adult education program. So, okay, well, we can move then, if there's nothing else, to first reading of ordinance twenty twenty five fifteen to rezone approximately one point nine seven acres of real property located on the east side of Hamilton Street identified as tax map number five oh one nine eleven fifty seven eighty thirty-one from general commercial, which is G C, to general residential, G R one.
Mayor and council, this is the piece of property that's outlined in blue right there, almost in the center of the screen. Fleetwood to the bottom and Hamilton to the left, the west.
And that's all residential now, isn't it, around?
Well, right now it's commercial, that lot, but I don't...
Okay, that looks landlocked. So, where you have the two fourteen and two oh eight? I rode by there and it's just one big empty lot. So, how is that property going to be accessed?
Cory, can you come up?
Is that the same owner?
Yes, so, the property owner of this parcel also owns two fourteen and two oh eight and his vision is to create a ten unit subdivision in there. That's his ultimate goal. At this moment, we're just looking at the rezoning of the property, but he does own the other two parcels there. So, he's looking to invest some money into there and kind of bring some new life into that area.
Okay.
Okay.
Another question, Cory. The Pickens County assessor shows this property is owned G R one already. Is that a mistake?
So, no, that, that parcel is general commercial. The one to the left, two fourteen and two oh eight, those are already G R one. So, this rezoning would make them contiguous with each other. So, as far as Pickens, that may be an issue.
But if the assessor says this parcel is G R one, that is a mistake?
That would be a mistake, in relation to our map. Our map says it's general commercial.
Jim, I've talked to Pickens County and there's a lot of mistakes on those.
Don't, don't rely?
Yes, don't rely. I'm assuming the zoning map is correct, so that's where I pulled it up to see what it was zoned as.
Zoning map is correct. I think at the time, this was, I think they were going to maybe potentially expand the apartments there or the mobile homes. But this gentleman's come in and he's got a kind of a different vision. These would all be single family homes that he's looking to do.
Any other questions for Cory?
And the access would be to Hamilton?
Correct, that is correct. It would be a one-way in, I think, at the end. And we haven't received any concrete plans. These have kind of all been conceptual. It would be kind of a cul-de-sac there and that's how it would be, the access would be to Hamilton.
Anything else? Thank you.
Yeah.
Next up is first reading of ordinance twenty twenty five sixteen to amend section ninety point three five of farm animals of chapter ninety, animals of title nine, general regulations of the Easly City Code to allow limited educational and programmatic use of hens, hens, chickens, by certain nonprofit educational and therapeutic organizations.
Cory, can you talk to this one as well?
Well, it's, the ordinance, I mean, this is a text amendment that was submitted. And they have dialed it down so that it has to be a certain acreage. It has to be for a certain purpose, if you see like on page two, educational programmatic, has to be female chickens. It does designate the Easly Police Department responsible for enforcement of this section. A written authorization has to be issued annually. There are specifications about the type of, the type of... That it has to be a nonprofit organization, has to be tax exempt under section five and three.
Do you have any specific questions or?
I'm just trying to figure out what a therapeutic organization would be to do with hens. I'm not really sure. I can see the educational and the, the...
Do you know about chicken therapy?
Nonprofit.
Chicken therapy? Chicken therapy.
I mean, do they do yoga with chickens?
Yoga with chickens.
I think it would go, so.
Well, they do goat yoga, but I've never heard of chicken yoga.
I would have just one question and it would probably be directed to Daniel in that if for some reason the city was to approve this, does that not open the door even though this is specific and it's very detailed for just five oh one C three? But we've already opened the door to make a consideration for this group. What would prevent other groups from coming and say, well, you've already did it for this group, how about if we wanted to come in and do it? So, in other words, this is setting a precedent.
Is it setting a precedent?
I'm not, I'm not concerned about, I'm not concerned about the setting a precedent that you would, would force a subsequent council to have to approve another request. Each request would stand on its own. So, this is just an exception under the, under a tax amendment that, with a blanket prohibition against chickens for these types of organizations, will allow it. Nothing prevents somebody else from asking, but it's always this council's discretion as to whether or not to approve it. And that decision will stand on its own in the future.
Cory, could you speak to who, like how this came about, who proposed this?
So, this was formulated from conversation with Jim Wilson and his wife, actually ironically, on the first day that I started here. This was something that they mentioned. And one of the things during my interview, they said, "Don't bring up chickens." And I thought it was, I thought I was being punked when this was the first day on the job that we're talking about chickens. But no, he was being serious. This was something they were trying to do at the Dream Center as, as a, a program with the children to look at, you know, raising in an animal, looking at the food, you know. We actually recently did an event over at Rock Springs, just kind of talking with some community people there. And one of the, one of the things the gentleman said is, "I miss, we don't have farm class anymore. We don't teach people that." So, you know, this would be that sort of educational element. Originally, when the tax amendment came through, it was specifically for the Dream Center. The planning commission made a recommendation to make it not parcel specific. And one of the reasons why I think that's a sound decision is things happen, God has his own plans, they could leave the Dream Center and they need to go somewhere else and then we're back here again asking about chickens. So, we wanted to remove the parcel associated with it and make it to where any person who meets all these parameters could do this in case they moved or another Dream Center responds in the future, which would be fantastic. So, that's how it came to fruition. And we, we were very hesitant at first because we didn't want this to be a full-blown city of chickens, you know. But I think with this program in general, it's been narrowed down and I think we have a lot of good parameters in place to make sure that it doesn't become a, a big nuisance.
And, and am I correct in understanding, it would have to be, this has to be on at least five continuous acres, contiguous acres? And that it is a limit of twelve hens, no roosters?
Correct, yes, sir. In a, in a confined area as well, not free roaming.
It also says that the coop and run shall be maintained in a clean, sanitary, odor-free and well-maintained condition. I know that we, when we've talked about chickens in the past, you know, you have concerns and this is five acres, which is different. Chickens are odorous and neighbor complaints. This doesn't specify how, so it's leaving it up to them as to how they maintain odor-free. There's no specifications as to chemicals, non-chemicals.
And also how it's written here is there would be a permit associated with it. From my understanding, it would be on a yearly basis.
Right.
So, if this becomes a nuisance, this is essentially a pilot program. If it doesn't work out and neighbors are complaining, which I don't think the Dream Center, other people could do this as well, but I don't think they would want this associated with them. I think they would want to make sure that this is not a nuisance. But in the event that it is, we would be able to revoke their permit and then bye-bye chickens, so.
And what about predators, bears, coyotes? I mean, it talks about how they're going to keep the coop and the run. Is, and this is probably an opinion, do you feel like it would be putting those families in danger to have chickens there? I mean, this is Pickens County.
I don't know what type of surveillance they would have. I mean, I think maybe because of what they do, there probably already is some surveillance surveying, so I think that they would probably have an understanding of what's going on. But, you know, I guess in... Yeah, so.
I just think this is opening a can of worms. First off, the police...
Chickens, worms, get it?
The police shouldn't have to, you know, check on this because it's like, I think they have better things to do than check on complaints of chickens. We have issues with barking dogs that never seems to get resolved. People tell me that they know people who have chickens in the city and nothing's ever done to them. And I would think that if we pass this, people's going to see chickens and then we're going to start getting other people that's going to have chickens without even going through the process. And it's just opening a can of worms. The ordinance has been no chickens in the city and I don't think we need to allow for this.
The other question I had, and I maybe, if I missed it, I apologize because this was very thorough. Euthanasia, sick chickens, old chickens. Is PETA, is PETA going to?
I don't, I don't know about the removal of a sick chicken. We can look to add that, you know, and have that amended if, if that's something, a topic of concern. But, yeah, I don't think that this ordinance speaks to that.
And it prohibits slaughter of chickens on sight?
Correct, yes, that is, that is, yeah. But as far as slaughtering for dinner and then getting, disposing of a...
Of an ill chicken, yes.
Yeah, I don't, I think there probably would be a little bit of leniency, but, you know, if that's something that, you know, was something we're concerned about, we could definitely amend that to have that included.
Anything else?
Ms. Rainey makes a good point that we have enough stuff on our plate day in and day out without getting into farm animals. I don't want my neighbor to have chickens to go along with his five dogs.
Well, I mean, we, we are talking...
This wouldn't apply to that.
Right, I know.
To that point of opening up a...
Yeah.
Conversation again.
We are talking twelve chickens at twenty, let's see, at twenty-five thousand people. That's like a, I don't know, point oh oh one?
Person to chicken.
Right, yeah. Person to chicken, right.
Anyway, we're talking a dozen, we're talking a dozen hens. I'm definitely going to support it. For the educational, therapeutic.
So, once again, therapeutic. Can you define what that means with chickens? I don't see the reason, the need for the therapeutic. I see the educational and the nonprofit possibly, but what's the therapeutic side of this? Does anybody know?
And I, I can tell you my understanding of it.
Okay.
Like, my aunt does therapeutic horse riding. It, it, it's something to engage the children in, you know, raising life, teaching them responsibility.
Empathy.
And empathy and bonding. That's, that's my understanding of the therapeutic part of it.
I think if, and reading to us and first going to Cory's explanation, that there's a fail-safe in here and that... They have an annual permit. And if it doesn't work, then the permit gets pulled and the program goes away. Because initially, my thought was along the same lines as Tom. That's why I asked Daniel the question that I did because, no, I'm, I'm not pro-chicken and the people that have chickens, apparently their neighbors aren't complaining about them or there would be other issues. Chickens, in my opinion, belong in the camp or somewhere else, elsewhere. But if, with this policy, you know, this is just a trial, basically it's a trial run pilot here. Pilot program. And with, with, with Daniel saying that it does not necessarily establish a precedent, I'm open to considering that.
Mayor Talbert, this is probably my last meeting and this discussion will go down in my memories of city council.
Chicken. Chicken therapy? Okay, anything else on chickens? Okay. Next up, we have, thank you Cory, reading of resolution twenty twenty five twelve to adopt an acceptable use policy for city of Easly elected officials regarding the use of city information systems. Jordan?
So, I'd like to start with a couple things that need to be addressed before we move on to questions. So, the purpose of the acceptable use policy is to establish clear expectations for the responsible, secure and lawful use of the city of Easly's technology systems, devices, email services and digital resources. This policy is designed to protect the integrity of our information assets, ensure compliance with state and federal regulations and uphold the city's commitment to transparency and effective public service. By outlining appropriate technology practices, the A U P safeguards both the city and its users, which are you guys in this case, while fully respecting the constitutional rights of your, of the elected officials. Without this policy in place, there's no enforceable limitations on what can or cannot be done on city-issue technology, including actions such as intentionally deleting emails or using government systems for non-business purposes. As municipality, we are legally required under South Carolina law to retain public data and communications, including emails and social media records for FOIA compliance and records retention purposes. That is a five-year retention policy with state. This policy simply clarifies the boundaries of what the city provides and how those systems must be used to protect both the city and its data. It does not govern or access your personal accounts or personal devices. It only includes recommendations intended to help you and future elected officials avoid inadvertent violations because we are actively seeing compliance issues occur since the last time this policy was brought to your attention. This development of this policy did not originate recently. It began probably about two and a half years ago when I first started here in twenty twenty three. And that was under the former administration. The policy itself is broad, foundational and mirrors the same standards already approved and required for all city employees, but in a much less restrictive way because it takes into account your First Amendment rights. It is both reasonable and fair to expect that elected officials who hold positions of greater public accountability use city technology systems properly, legally and accordance with the same principles we expect from staff. And I'd be happy to share with you the policy that city employees use or the police department because theirs is even more stringent. It's the policy from SLED, we're not even able to change it. And with that established, I can take any questions you might have about it.
I think, I just wanted to clarify, and you just said it, but I'll just re-say it, make sure I'm understanding it. I know that when I came, you talked to me about the prior administration having started this.
Yes.
And the reasons they started this. And then since, we've had other issues to your point. But it starts out stating that this is regarding the use of the city's resources only.
Correct. So, the technology we provide to the council members is a laptop and an email address. We're not required to do that, but we do for retention of records. South Carolina states that we have to, to maintain your business emails for five years or any documents that you create. So, we don't put that burden on you guys because I'm sure it'd be really hard for you to go into Gmail and back up your own Gmail for five years, especially if you only serve four years, you're still on the hook for that one last year.
So, the other discussion that you and I had, when even with the laptops versus the other, is that are we not one of the few cities, if not the only city, that provides that equipment?
Correct.
So, the alternative to having one of these is that we don't provide laptops and phones. But what does that open an elected official up to as regarding using their, if they don't have a laptop to use for city emails or a phone to use for city business, they have to, and you talked about maybe setting a computer up here for them to use for city emails, but does that not open their personal phone up to FOIA?
Correct. If they're conducting personal business with a personal email or a personal social media account, if it's, if it is city business, it is FOIBL and you are required to maintain those records. Even if somebody comments on your post and deletes it, you still have to maintain that record regardless, no ifs, ands or buts.
So, there is an option we could do without city equipment?
So, Jordan, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Would, would you agree that the policy as written applies to things outside of city devices? So, section eleven, social networking and blogging, I assume that that is not really supposed to happen on city devices, correct?
Correct.
So, section eleven discusses social networking and blogging?
It gives recommendations that would better help you in, in understanding that you have to retain those comments or posts, but it doesn't tell you whether you do or do not, or what you can or cannot post personally.
Okay, it, it actually does. In section seven, elected officials cannot use social media to harass, certainly, threaten, obviously, discriminate or disparage other elected officials or anyone associated with or doing business with the city. Who decides whether something is disparaging to an elected official?
Whoever sees the issue and brings it up with the administration, I'm assuming.
Okay, who, who's making that decision, whether it's disparaging or not?
It could be anybody that has a problem with what's posted. It could be a constituent, it could be a city employee, it could be yourself.
And you would agree that this is not actually limited only to city devices?
I would assume it's not, no.
Okay.
But is, is it a recommendation?
It's a recommendation.
So, when it says...
You shouldn't harass people, I mean...
Certainly.
So, when you say cannot, is that a legal term? Is that a recommended term?
It's more of a recommended term.
So, Justin, have you emailed?
Based on the conversation that I'm having, that I'm...
Sure.
Did you email Jordan and ask him these questions in advance of the meeting tonight?
No.
Okay.
Because, because of...
What you have posted on Facebook?
I've received phone calls about it. And, no, good.
No, it's good that people communicate with...
Well, no.
That's not the point. The point is that we get this packet and it was posted Thursday.
And you could have emailed Jordan Thursday evening, Friday, this morning to get...
That question answered. Going out on Facebook and getting all these people riled up.
Making people think that the city of Easly is trying to quash their...
Uh, freedom of speech. And so, that's the point of getting our packet so that we can get information, ask questions in advance of meeting.
You understand that the city itself actually posted this first?
I understand that, but as a councilperson, these questions that you're having now could have been answered by Jordan.
And to further clarify that point, since the last time this was brought up, I have received zero questions, zero recommendations, zero offers to have a meeting. This is the first question that I'm getting is at these meetings.
Well, I, I believe in our prior, in our prior hearing on this, I believe it was made clear that at least a, a number of people on the council view this as an infringement on the First Amendment. It is saying what elected officials can and cannot say. It is saying what elected officials can and cannot post a... It is saying what elected officials can and cannot post a picture.
To that point, would you agree that city employees should have that removed from their policy as well, didn't?
Uh, I don't know, we're not city employees.
That, that's, I mean, would you agree that going forward, if we do reevaluate that policy, would you want that removed for employees as well?
I would be, I would be fine with that, I'm not advocating for it or against it. I'm here to defend the First Amendment rights of elected officials sitting here in this room.
Well, the First Amendment is that Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech or of the press, or the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances. But it does not protect us from consequences of slander.
Oh, sir.
Discrimination. And a lot of people will say First Amendment right, but this is city equipment only that, that they're talking about. So would you, what about if we suggest, help me suggest an amendment to that with the disparage comment, I mean, how could.
We can remove the word disparage, but everything else I feel like should stand on its own.
How do we protect, or would you, would you just want to say, okay, we won't do any equipment for elected officials?
Well, we, we've already agreed that this policy is not just for city devices. I'm going to make a motion that we simply strike Section eleven governing city members' social media posts.
The entire section?
The entire section.
But, so if you, you, do you use your city issued laptop for social media?
No, I haven't used my city issued laptop in probably eight months, no.
I've personally witnessed several other, I, I don't want to point any names out, but people do use this laptop specifically to browse Facebook in the middle of our meetings. So they have been used for personal reasons.
If I understand this, this policy.
Is primarily being established to protect the city.
The taxpayers, yes.
Taxpayers, yes.
And elected officials as well.
Yes.
Gives you guidelines that should help you or future elected officials that don't understand or know about the FOIA or the retention laws.
Or the legal ramifications.
Bottom line is, if you don't want to agree to it, then you don't have to. But, um, yeah, whatever the consequences might be, then that's what you deal with. I know that, having attended many mask meetings, that I have heard that.
Easely, one rare exception in the state that allows, that provides laptops to their council members.
I don't know of another, do you know of another city?
I don't know of another one, because of this issue specifically.
So I guess we do one of.
Two things, you can either adopt the policy or just remove the laptops. But.
And that still doesn't really.
It doesn't absolve you as an elected official from your responsibility for what you post with the laws.
We still also provide email communications as well, so that doesn't necessarily cover that portion either.
Did Daniel review this?
He did.
And what's your opinion?
So I've, I have reviewed it and if you would notice, it went through a pretty substantial revision since the last time it came before council. And I just want to comment on Section eleven, which was the concern regarding social networking and blogging. You know, it, it specifically references the First Amendment and how the city, this policy is not designed to impact your First Amendment rights. And the First Amendment is subject to reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions. And so when this was drafted in the concerning provision that you had, Justin, is Section seven, it's dealing with harassment, threatening, discrimination, and disparagement of other, of other elected officials or anyone associated with or doing business with the city. That to me is a reasonable restriction upon council members. If you're attacking people in the community who are doing business with the city or your elected officials, that to me is a reasonable restriction. And you may disagree, but that is why that provision stayed within the policy.
You believe that disparage would not be found to be overly broad?
I, I don't, I mean, I think you have a, you have a, if you, if you are with someone doing business with the city, if you are reducing their reputation in the community, that's, that's talking about libel or slander. I think that's a reasonable restriction to prevent that.
So if I were to say council member X has voted for every tax increase the last six years, uh, they should be removed. Would that be disparaging?
I would not agree, that's disparaging.
That's factual, if that's what you were saying, if it's factual.
Well, it, disparaging is not, no, you're talking about truthfulness here. I mean, certainly something can be both disparaging and truthful.
Justin, we're talking semantics here with the words.
Oh, absolutely.
If you don't like, if you don't like disparage, we could put something else in and then somebody else. So the bottom line, it's, um, you could just, you can make a decision when this comes up for a vote. I think that.
I think the, I'll also comment, I think, you know, the, some of the language, if I remember, is consistent with, you know, the oath of office that you all take and the civility oath, I mean, I, you know, that's, this is not new. You've already agreed to this in some respect. This is how I'm going to conduct myself as an elected official. So.
I'd actually argue it violates my oath of office.
I think so too.
Well, that's, that's for council to decide. And the other parts of Section eleven are, you know, not to, I don't think this has become an issue with council in terms of using their social media or personal blogging, but there has been a fair amount of litigation across the country dealing with elected officials who use personal social media, hold themselves out as an elected official, open debate on social media accounts, Facebook or blogging, then begin to delete comments from the public that they don't like. And so that, that does create a First Amendment issue, that, so that's providing, a lot of the language is, is, is directed to making sure council does not get them, get themselves, individual members get themselves and/or the city in legal trouble by, by, by doing that.
Being that you're probably the neutral party here in this conversation, what's your recommendation? Is appropriate for me to ask? Do you, do you think this protects the city to the point that we should go with it?
I wouldn't have reviewed it and put it on the, or put it on the agenda if I didn't think so.
Okay.
I didn't put it on the agenda, but I mean, after I reviewed it, I wouldn't have.
Is this big enough and creates enough conversation that we need to do it with these six people rather than waiting until January and do it with these three and those new three? Would that, would that fly better with the, with the public? I had a dozen calls today thinking that this is going to handcuff us from talking.
I, I just, I do not, I do not see where that's coming from. And I'm just, I don't have a vote, but I do not see it.
Considering this is not the first time before, since it's come before council, I think it's appropriate to move it forward. Sorry that Justin didn't get his questions answered completely, but there again.
Those were matters that couldn't have been discussed in advance of the report session.
But when it comes as a recommendation, I would think that if it's on the agenda.
Mr. Hughes had reviewed it and so I think it is, and plus Jordan.
With his background, his experience, and knowing what is necessary again to protect the citizens of Easely, the taxpayers, then I think it is a, a policy that we need to approve.
Mr. Robbins, you, Mr. Robinson, do you think my, my, my First Amendment rights are going to be.
To those who are opposed to this policy, what is it that you want to say that you think this po, policy would prohibit you from saying?
Well, I'm other.
You want to call Jim Robinson a stupid old bald man? Okay, go, go to it. But is that, you know, what, what do you want to say that this is going to prohibit?
Well.
On city equipment.
Well, but not, but that's the thing, it's not just on city equipment, we've already, Jordan agreed, this is not just a restriction on city equipment. I agree that there should be restrictions on the proper use of city equipment, that's, I think that's beyond any dispute. Um, I, I completely agree with that.
I use discernment, you need to use discernment when you're posting as an elected official. If you're posting.
As a person, that's one thing.
So, you know.
Jordan, can you, can you clarify, I know that I asked you this question and maybe I didn't understand it correctly, but if you're not on city equipment and you decide to post that Jim Robinson, what is it, say that again, Jim Robinson?
No, old stupid ball.
Okay. But if you, if you said that on your personal social media and not on the city, all this is doing is telling you you're liable for it, we're not, right? Correct. That's the way I understand it. I read it as if you can be sued for libel and slander, there's a three-year statute of limitations on slander, by the way. Um, but the city's not going to pay out taxpayer money in that settlement. It'll be you paying him for the stupid ball head every month.
And throw in Shyster lawyer.
Shyster.
Well, Tom, I, I like your end, I mean, if you want to, if you want to make a motion to table it until next month, I'd certainly second it.
Well, I was just asking the question, I don't.
Good idea.
I don't use that laptop anyway.
But the goal is to protect the taxpayer from that lawsuit.
Body weapon? Uh, I don't know, okay. I, I don't, yeah. Okay. Any more discussions about this, of this, okay? Let's move on. Reading of Resolution twenty twenty-five nineteen to accept certain roads from JBDY one LLC into the City of Easely Roads Network. Tom?
Mayor Talbert, I've noticed the signature on the deed, which I can't find right this moment, appears to be Danny Youngblood.
Yes, Daniel E. Youngblood.
And Robinson Law Firm has rendered legal services to Mr. Youngblood or his company. I did not prepare that particular deed, but I will recuse myself from voting on that when it comes up.
Mayor, Council, this is the two streets, Whitman Way and Benjamin Drive, that you see there as part of that subdivision.
Any questions, discussion?
They finished that and put the last topic on?
Yes, sir. It's been inspected by Public Works Engineer.
It's already in the city.
In the city limits, yes, sir.
There's one year warranty.
One year warranty. On the road. By the developer.
By, by the road.
Okay, any questions, discussion? All right, next we have Reading of Resolution twenty twenty-five twenty to appoint Jim Walker to the City of Easely Planning Commission. I think we talked to Mr. Walker last month?
General.
The retired Brigadier General, yes. And I think it was tabled for a date issue, some sort of a date concern, but. This is the. Is it, am I correct in that he could not attend the December meeting anyway, is that?
No, you're correct, it's February.
November.
Oh, November, okay, okay, that was last month, I'm sorry. Any questions?
You know, this is, this is the other issue that I got a lot of calls on today. And I like to throw it back out, do we want to do this this month, or would this be better to wait until next month?
So you're saying we could have had the night off?
Yeah.
I'm here. I'm lawfully occupying this seat, newly elected and in good standing, I believe. We have an agenda in front of us and I think we should vote on it.
I just asked the question.
This appointment is supposed to be a replacement for Mr. Fetter who resigned in November. So it seems like you're skipping over the November and December appointment and jumping right into January. I don't think that probably is proper. Now, I do recall in November, this was supposed to be tabled until, I don't even remember what the reason was. But I, that's, to me, this isn't right. I mean, you're replacing somebody who left, but now you're just ignoring his, the last two months and jumping into January.
Because of the way the ordinance is written, it would be for a three-year term. And therefore, if we were to have Mr. Walker, who's not with us today, fulfill the rest of Mr. Fetter's term, it would be for one month. His, his term ends at the end of December.
And then he could be come up again for.
And we would have to then do this again. So we thought it was the most appropriate that we have him go from three, for the full three-year term from one discussion, opposed to having him come back again and do this again in January.
But you're leaving a seat vacant.
For one month.
Correct, yes, we are leaving a seat vacant for one month. I mean, if, if things would have been, you know, maybe flushed out a little better last meeting, we would have had him in this month. You know, we would have had him for one month, but.
Well, if he had have just changed that date on that ordinance, we wouldn't have this issue.
Hindsight's always twenty-twenty, but here we are now. In regards to that, I, I mean, I, I'm actually looking to expand the planning commission. That's, that's something that I'm bringing to the planning commission to discuss next week. I think we would like to see more discussion from residents and people in different wards to speak on their perspectives and to review the UDO and get involved in the, in the public process. That's why we believe that from five to seven is the best, is the best route. It's done in Clemson, it's done in Greenville, it's done in a lot of jurisdictions around us. And then also, we have people with young families on the, on the commission as well. Kid gets sick, we only have to reimburse right now, we don't have a quorum. And if anyone, this is just a shameless plug, if anyone ever wants to go to our application tracker on our website, you can look at everything coming through the pipeline, the dates involved, we got a lot of stuff coming up. And we need more people. We thought this was a great candidate as far as the timeline. You know, it's, it's unfortunate that he would have to start in January, but we didn't want to have him come back again. You know, I think also for a new ca, a new council as well, maybe this would have been a softball pitch for him, but.
What's the problem with the new council?
I would say one more, one more item to their, their agenda. I don't know what the agenda will be next month, but I'm saying this would be just another thing. If we appointed him today and then appointed him again in January, that would be just another conversation we have to have. You know.
Well, that's, that should have been the process.
Okay, that's fair.
I just were talking about what was last month and the whole reason why we didn't do this is because of what you had said. So anyway, we cannot go back in time and in order to, excuse me, start January twenty-sixth off with a full planning commission, I think that this needs to go ahead.
We have a full docket. Come, yes.
And, and maybe this would be possible, I don't know, but would it be possible to appointment of Jim Walker to the planning commission from December eighth twenty-five to December thirty-first, twenty-five and January first to December thirty-first?
Well, that's what was, wasn't that what was on there last month?
That's what we had last month and was tabled.
That's exactly what we had last month.
Exactly, but it was not to fit, finish out Mr. Fetter's term. It was just adding a new term to someone else.
Which in effect finished out his term and started a new one.
Yeah.
So that two birds with one stone.
Well, then the UDO probably needs to be changed to address those situations, if that's what's going to happen.
Is, is there an upcoming December meeting?
For the planning commission, yes, there is.
So see, that seat needs to be filled.
And we are, after this discussion, we look to move towards the next resolution, which is we have a person who we believe would be a, a good applicant to fill one of those seats. So we would be adding more people back. So, you know, it's, but we, we're kind of confined as far as the timelines of when people are coming and going. Based on the way the ordinance is written, we have to stagger them.
Right.
So that's why previously it was written to where, you know, Mr. Walker would have carried out his term and then started the new term. So, that's why previously it was written to where, you know, Mr. Walker would have carried out his term and then started the new term. I don't know if maybe, I don't know what happened and why it all just tabled, but here we are. And, you know, we're just, we think that he'd be assigned appointment starting January 2026, and that's what we're here for.
Okay. We'll move to the next one, which is Reading of Resolution 202521 to appoint Hillary Costa to the City of Eastlake Planning Commission. And this is to fill in a...
This would be Mr. Loshiels.
So, this is like a...
This is, again, fulfilling the appointment of another member, and then she would be...
So, this is not a full, this is a year.
Correct. No, she would be fulfilling this for the one-year appointment, ending December 31st, 2026.
Any discussion?
We do have...
Did I, is she's here? Did you, we asked, do y'all want to hear from Ms. Costa? We heard from Mr. Walker, I believe, last month?
Sure.
Thank you all for having me tonight. I, from going door to door during the campaign, it was really nice to hear from all my neighbors and their many different thoughts they have about the city of Eastlake and the growth, and just how the city is progressing with the future. And from the campaign, I learned quite a bit about our UDO as well as our strategic plan, something that I was actually very interested in. I think Eastlake has a lot to offer. And from getting to know Cory and Mario, I thought this would be a great opportunity to be a part of Eastlake. And also, from the perspective of my ward, kind of represent our interest to the planning commission as we see the future for Eastlake.
Do y'all have any questions for Ms. Costa? Thank you. Any discussion? Okay. Do we have project updates, or we're going?
We're going straight to...
Okay, so, we need to make a motion to vote to go into executive session. No votes will be taken, and we're just going to have a discussion about legal advice pertaining to impact fees, Section 30-4-70A2. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to go into executive session?
Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Hughes.
Sure.
Regarding the previous ordinance for planning commission, to avoid some of the difficulty we had at the last meeting, if any council member is inclined to make a motion for Mr. Walker to finish the term in December and then get reappointed starting in 2026, I would like to speak with them so we can nail down what the wording is on that resolution before we get into the business meeting. That would be my request. Please come to me if you want to do that.
Okay. Now, if we have a motion to go into executive session, is there a second? Second?